Oh, me, I see. Several things to cover, I wasn't sure what all this committee dealt with. I see this as taxes and construction. The first item, I don't know, is anybody going to take us through the details of this? We didn't, that's for sure. I had my computer in front of me before, I thought it was on there, but since I have my computer, I'm going to ask you to bring this one up there.
Okay. Joette is reminding us we need to do a roll call first for the committee.
It should be in your phone.
Here, can I go?
Here.
Now, this is, Alice Johnson's here.
Oh, here.
Davey, here, and Shannon.
She'll be here.
Oh, she'll be here. In that case, if this is a public minister, she's gone.
Would you like us to proceed, or do you want us to wait?
What are you waiting for?
I think we have one other working on tomorrow.
Yeah, Shannon.
We don't have, we have a form.
Okay, I think we do have a form. Okay. Good afternoon, this is the Operations Management Committee. We're going to give you a little bit of background on some things because it'll be your first time that you see it. Chair Todd is correct, we deal a lot with taxes and facilities. Anything that is operational or logistics wise, I would say will be coming before your committee. I also have the pleasure of having a lot of my staff in the Office of Finance and Operations. We have the Division of Budgets, that is part of my office, District Support Services, which brings most of the things that will appear in front of you. These are things that are statutorily or regulatorily required to be approved or reviewed or blessed by the Board. And we'll walk through each one of them. I will say, if you haven't worked in public education finance, it is a different world. So, we intend on, hopefully, at a later date, having a session where we can really explain to you how all the funding flows, where we get the money from, who it flows through, how we give it out, and all those things. But for today's meeting, we're going to focus on a couple of items. The first one is actually the approval of the 2019-20 Local District Tax Rate Levy. Local school districts are taxing authorities in their own right. And so, while we have approved previously almost all of the 172 school districts, we have three that are here for your consideration and approval for today. I want to introduce Donna Duncan, she is the Division Director in my office in District Support Services, and Donna's going to walk us through this action item.
Well, good afternoon. You all have the lucky committee assignment. Consider yourselves the ones. As Robyn said, these, the first item on is the Local District Tax Levy. And just to give you a little bit of background, for those of you that have been involved with Boards of Education or been superintendents, this is probably going to be some familiar territory to me. Each year, the PDAs submit the tax, the taxes levy or the tax rates to the Department of Revenue, who then certifies it and sends it to the Department of Education. And Jay Ritter, who is the manager of our financial reporting branch, and his staff go through those as they come in and try to do 24-hour turnaround back out to the districts. So, the district can see the various calculations for the taxes and choose what tax rate they want to implement for the next year. Some of those tax rates are simply what the boards can choose to do to do long, for example, if they do compensating. Some may require a public hearing, such as if they do the 4%. If they choose to do something else up their nickel, that will also require some public hearing and perhaps even a vote. And just, again, like Robyn said, we will go through this in a lot more detail, but for those that have a lot of interest in this, out on our website, under the Seek section, when you get into there, we'll be certainly glad to work with you, there's some frequently asked questions that actually give you examples for how the tax rates are calculated. Okay? So, that's what the district's going to have to choose from. So, starting in, it's normally the October agenda, is it? Okay, we start getting the ones that have completed the process. They have, you know, the boards have met, they have looked at the various tax rates available to them, what revenues they would bring in, they have then chosen by board action to adopt a rate, they have, you know, gone publicly and done their public notices on what the rate will be, and there are certain requirements in terms of time frames that they have to do that, and then to vote on it. So, most of them will be on your October agenda. There are some times that they'll be a little delayed, either because they've got a little bit of late start, perhaps they're trying to do a new nickel and things have been somewhat delayed. So, that, the next group, which is normally a lot smaller, is on December's group. And every now and then, we'll have some really laggards coming in, and those are the ones that are on the February agenda. And you only have three this time. And the three that you have are Lincoln County, and theirs, again, was pending a nickel, looking at trying to implement a new nickel tax. And they have now decided to make that nickel tax subject to vote in November of '20, so they're moving forward with the 4% waived issue. So, that's one of the ones you're going to be approving. Another one is Gallatin County, and that, you know, sometimes especially in counties that have very small staff, somebody being out in effect, wasn't able to get it done, excuse me. Their finance officer was out of medical leave, so they just didn't use their information file in time. Martin County, Martin is probably somewhat, just bless you, has been perpetually late in the past, and it's not so much their fault, it's that their PDA can be kind of odd about getting the tax assessments in. So, it's amazing what often affects us. Anyways, you have the three that are in here to dispatch, and we're asking for approval for this, and that will complete all of the districts for this year.
What are Gallatin and Martin looking for? Four stamps or?
Let's see, Gallatin, let me find it here.
Was it that much of the previous thing?
Gallatin, we have it other. So, they have chosen a calculation that they have looked at what they did in the past, and they may have done somewhere in between, like a compensating 4%, they've done the calculation.
Martin's also other. Usually, they're trying to match the prior year rate, keep the same rate.
I'm getting motion in a second. I'll leave that.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you make a comment? Because this is, some people are going to reflect on it, seeing this, saying this before every time.
Well, it'd be remiss if you didn't, Mr. Chairman.
The 4% was enacted years ago, years ago, as a cap to try to keep districts from getting any more than 4%, other than you could get the 4% plus new growth. You could get new growth. And so, it goes way down. And everybody can take the 4% without repercussions, okay? And it makes no sense not to take the 4%. It just is crazy, and even my own county has failed on several occasions to take the 4%, which is infuriating, and then they come up here with all their various problems. So, I just, you will always hear me say, even when we go back to the floor today, I will be saying, every one of you should be taking the 4%, it's crazy not to. And it was punitive.
Why didn't you use the tablet before she did?
Well, you could get rates all over, you could get rates all over the, it was set in place to cap. So, if you're cheating your students, in other words.
Most counties do the 4%.
Most of them.
How does he split 4% and compensating?
This year, we had 77 did 4%, 49 did compensate. There's a lot of others.
And 42 have other.
Yeah.
That keeps the revenue pretty flat from the prior year. It looks back to figure out how much revenue they should have collected. Keeps it relatively flat.
And if you look in your board materials that we provided, there is a historical perspective of what each district has done for like the last five years. So, you'll be able to see kind of the pattern within their district of what they're taking and when. It's in your board materials, it should be with your board materials that you have. And then a summary at the, at the bottom that tells you how many they took what.
Yeah, sorry about the small font. I'll update myself.
Jay has younger eyes than someone else.
Yeah.
Chair, would you like us to proceed?
Please.
Okay. Our second item that we're bringing before you is requesting approval of a new district facility plan for the Ohio County School District in accordance with 702-KAR-180. What we do is district facility plans, for those that you, that may be familiar, I like to describe those as sort of your strategic planning for facilities in your district. It allows, it requires districts to adopt a new district facility plan every four years. They can ask for a waiver, they could extend that to eight years. But basically, within that plan, they're trying to identify and provide transparency to the public through local planning committees that kind of shows the interest in their facility needs, as well as their desire to move projects forward. Approval of the district facility plan does not approve any funding for local school districts. This is just their plan of moving forward. We have before you today, Ohio County School District, they have complied with the appropriate steps as required by statute and regulation, and we are requesting approval.
Questions?
I'll move.
Second.
Our next items, we actually have two, and I'm going to, with the chair's indulgence, if we can ask to take them a little bit out of order, because we have a guest, Superintendent Gary Fields is here with us from Bowling Green Independent, and I've invited him to come to the table. I'm going to let Donna talk about this, this is a waiver request in the facilities area, and I'll let Donna kind of tee it up, and then we'll offer time to the superintendent, if you'd like to make any comments.
Well, thank you all, we really do appreciate Superintendent Fields waiting to trip up from Bowling Green today. As the Kentucky Board of Education, you have the authority to waive certain regulations. The regulations have been passed with your purview to affect the Kentucky Department of Education and our rules, as long as they don't affect, you know, health and safety and few other features, then you can waive them. And in this case, what we're asking to waive are provisions related under the capital construction process and the facilities planning manual. The school in question that we're looking at is Bowling Green Independent High School. It was built in 1970, and it was back, I don't know if you all remember, back when the ground schools with no walls were very popular?
Yes.
Okay, well, he's blessed to have one of those. And one of the things they have on site too is an auditorium, and that's an indoor swimming pool. And that's, you know, you don't see that as often today, but there were certain schools that felt okay, and we had Superintendent Fields come up to talk to us about his proposed renovations to the facility. It became very clear to us that this auditorium is a very central piece of their physical education program. Their students are required to take water safety and swimming, they also instruct their younger children in the pool. All bowers, they do make it available to the community based on their own purpose, and their purpose is education. And because of that, the auditorium being there, and they are going to replace the current one and rebuild a newer one, plus the renovations they're wanting to make to their facility to bring it more in line with their educational facility needs today, that the actual space will exceed what's in the current planning manual as needed for a high school. And remember, of course, when this facility was first built in 1970, those provisions didn't exist. So, Superintendent Fields has presented us with a plan, and wondered what to, and we have found it to be very reasonable, that makes very good use of their space, but because it does exceed what's in our planning manuals, they're here today seeking a waiver of those limitations on size that can carry forth their planning. So, we're recommending approval. Superintendent Fields is here to answer any questions or talk about this project if you'd like.
We're in the process of rebuilding Bowling Green High School, we're completing Phase One as we speak. June 1st, we moved in 90,000 square feet of classroom space, performing arts space, classroom space, and a kitchen. We hope to begin this summer, Phase Two, which would include an auditorium, auxiliary gym, and a new performing arts center, theater on the property, and then begin Phase Three right after that, completion date hopefully in 23, 2023. That would complete with new library, administrative space, some more classroom space as we complete it. Swimming pool has been part of our school, as Donna said, since 1970. I was the principal of the high school for 13 years before I became superintendent five years ago, and had first-hand knowledge of, the pool is full all day long, either with high school students or elementary students. And although it isn't part of the educational process, all we do, we serve our community well. We do take the 4%. We, we take the 4%, we're at 85.4 is our tax rate, which is very high, an independent district, so that's traditionally higher than our county counterparts. We also, our community with no opposition, allowed us to approve the nickel in 2017 for this project, the high school rebuild. So, the community of Bowling Green is all in, the vision included all of these things, performing arts, we have a 100-member orchestra. We are, we are one of the most diverse school districts in the state, if you didn't know. You may see us up here at some point with Warren County about English language learners and the struggles we're having, and the support we need financially from the legislature. But we have a very diverse school district, over 70% of our students are EL students, we are 60% free lunches in the district, we have 20% African-American students. We are a great snapshot of a great growing community, and so, this is important to us to continue our mission as a high school, which we were established in 1908, so we have a lot of longstanding tradition. We appreciate the help of Donna and Greg and Jay, and they've been great, because this is very complicated and very unique, and I appreciate their willingness to look at it a little differently than, than a normal project.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Obviously, Bowling Green is one of the quickest-growing communities in the state of Kentucky. And so, is the, one of the reasons that you're asking for a waiver is because you anticipate a lot more students in the future, and therefore, you need more room quicker?
Correct. We are projecting our school, the number we're using is 1450 as enrollment, which this year, we had our highest enrollment ever, the first day of school at 1311, which is, which is, I started in 2001 as principal, and we had 938 students. So, we are, we are so unique to a lot of communities in Kentucky, and we are lucky, we are fortunate, and we understand that, that we are growing. The Warren County School District is growing even faster, and so, it's, it's an exciting time in our community, and so, this will address that, this growing community that, you know, we are becoming a suburb of Nashville, and if you've been to Nashville, you've seen the 50 cranes in downtown, and we, it is a true benefit to us.
Do you budget impact, or do you cover it with your own funds?
We can cover it. In our BG1, the Board has committed $2.5 million of local funds to cover this overreach, so we're not using restricted money for that project, and so, we, the Board in the local community is, wants to have skin in the game, and we understand that, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Great. Any other questions? I mean, we approve the way?
I select them.
Okay. I want to say hi. Very good.
Thank you, high five right here, Donna.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Sir, you dropped your name tag.
Oh, yeah. They might not let me out of here. I'll get out of here. Well, no, this is much more pleasant up here now, I appreciate your work.
Same for back.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next agenda item will get back a little after. And we have another.
This is almost a copy of what you've heard, this one reason we're going to reverse it. Superintendent Robyn's was not available to figure today. He had conflicting meetings, so he asked that you could hear from Superintendent Fields so he could describe the project. The one in Davis County is similar in that it also is one of our infamous ground schools, you know, in the open concept. They are in the process of trying to do a major renovation that would take it from that concept into more of the kind of structure that they feel is appropriate for facilities today. It was obviously over when it was from our current standards, because this school was built in 1969, and it was, of course, back in the Space H era, that's why it's named Apollo in Davis County, Kentucky. But anyway, so they're trying to do a major renovation, their amount of space will be over to 125, it's listed in the regulation, and they too are asking for a waiver to allow them to consider a project. They also have, the calculated capacity of the building is 1,100 students, and their projected enrollment is 1,400, so they are projecting growth in that district as well. And they have a financial capacity to carry forward this project.
Did they take the 4%?
I'll check it.
Are you saying brown schools or round schools?
Round.
I remember that now.
I attended a round school.
Like 4%.
They did take the 4% this year, yes.
Did this is, yeah, sure. Did they get a second? Alice did a second. On the favor? Very good. Seem like they're pulling around, they don't keep any boundaries during that.
Okay. So, next on our agenda, we have some review items. These are administrative regulations that we are bringing before you. I'm going to ask Lauren Moore to join me at the table.
Thanks, Lauren.
And we're going to take these, again, out of order. I apologize, we have some guests that are coming for one of the administrative regulations, and I think they've just come into the building, so Matt has gone down to get them, but Lauren's here with us. Lauren is my Division Director in School and Community Nutrition. That program area, unlike other areas of my office, is a programmatic area that deals with the U.S. Department of Agriculture's National School Lunch Program, School Breakfast Programs, CACFP Program. And there's, and it is amazing to me, I will share with you, that the work it takes to feed a child in the school districts, it is a lot of work. So, Lauren is here with us today, she's going to talk to us about two regulations. We are asking for the proposed repeal of one regulation, and the other is to make conforming amendments to the other regulation if you do approve the approval of the repeal of the first one. This has to do with training of our food service staff. So, Lauren, I'm going to let you just kind of explain it.
Absolutely. So, within our, this particular program is for our school meal programs, which is National School Lunch and School Breakfast. So, within those, for these food service staff, there are really three overarching areas of compliance. There's this state regulation we're discussing today, the federal requirements, professional standards requirements, and then there's also requirements for the local health departments. So, the school cafeterias have to get health, food service permits and health inspections, and their staff members have to have food handlers permits, similar to that of just any other food service establishment. So, in 2000, March of 2015, the United, the federal government promulgated, or published a final rule that basically had training hours, implemented training hours for our food service staff. Preceding that was this state regulation. So, since 2015, we have been monitoring and overseeing our districts under two kind of sets of requirements in addition to the local requirements. The state regulation outlines seven hours in the initial year for all staff, regardless of their level, director, manager, or other staff. And also, they have, or any subsequent years, they have to have four hours. And our state regulation actually outlines seven really specific areas, and this regulation has been on the books for quite some time. So, when, in 2015, when the federal requirements came about, it actually gives more, I won't say flexibility, but more targeted training for directors, because of course, as we know, they need very different training than maybe a food service staff member in a cafeteria, and also managers. So, we are just asking that we offer appeal the state regulation in favor of basically holding our districts accountable for the federal requirements, which we've been doing votes since '15.
So, the federal overlayed the state or exceeded the state?
They exceeded.
It's just more flexibility.
Uh-huh. So, currently, for the state requirements, as I said, for the first year, there are seven hours, and this is across all staff, seven hours for the first year and four hours subsequently. For directors, under the federal requirements, they are required to have 12 annual hours. Managers require 10 hours, and then other staff, which would be your cafeteria staff, are required to have six hours. And that other staff, that's for anybody who works 20 hours or more. Anybody who's less than 20 hours is required to have four hours under the federal requirements. For the state, it was four hours in the first year and two, so the federal requirements are higher.
Okay. So, little questions?
So, this is just a review item, it's just the first reading, and we will actually, you know, as we come and speak with the Board about it, and also, as the public learns more about it, we will receive input or comments about it. So, we will come back to you for a second reading at the next board meeting, and let you know if we've heard any differences. Okay?
And the second regulation that Rhonda mentioned also for review is just, it's for just an amendment to strike a reference to this regulation if it's repealed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Okay. And I think the next item that we have on the agenda is related to.
School safety.
Yes, school safety. And I'm going to ask our guest to join me at the table. So, this agenda item is to review a proposed new regulation, 702-KAR-180. This is the school risk assessment tool, and to talk about that and incorporate that into a regulation by reference. I have guests here with me today, this is John Akers from the Kentucky Center for School Safety, and Ben Wilcox. And Mr. Wilcox is the new State Security Marshal for the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Both of these gentlemen have, since the passage of Senate Bill One in the 2019 session, have hit the ground running, and they're running as fast as they can. If the School Safety and Resiliency Act, which was passed, really tries to look at a comprehensive effort of safety for our local school districts, it has various components, including components for school resource officers, mental health professionals, and facilities, and there's training abundant in it as well. And the state school marshal has been charged, along with the Center for School Safety, to come up with a assessment tool that each district will go through a process of answering a series of questions with the help of their staff and offices, and identify, you know, what they are in compliance with and what they're not in compliance with. We did take this, and so, what you have for you today, this is the first reading, the Center for School Safety does not have regulatory promulgation authority, and so, the Department of Education repromulgate the reg on behalf of them. It is their tool, and that's why I've asked them to come and answer questions or speak to the contents of the tool, but it is our regulatory process and will be part of our regulation. It is the first reading. We did take this in front of LSAC, which is the Local Superintendent's Advisory Council. Last week, I actually was ill, and so, the gentlemen were here presenting, along with Whitney Crowe from Dr. Kelly Foster's office, and they did receive some feedback from superintendents. I will, I'll try to briefly summarize what at least has been conveyed to me about maybe some suggestions for improvement, and then I'll let them kind of address other things that they heard. But I think some of the superintendents offered that they wanted to make sure that the assessment was really assessing what Senate Bill One requires and not exceeding that. I do think that these gentlemen, of course, have a lot of really good information based upon their past background, skill, and experience of things that are good practice and good guidance for local school districts, but I think the initial comment was making sure that the assessment tool really sticks to what is required in Senate Bill One. So, I'm going to turn it over to the gentleman, let them make what comments, and then if you all have any questions.
First, I'd like to say thank you for serving on the Board. I know you're doing it for the pay, right? But having been in the circles for almost 50 years now, I really appreciate those who step up to the plate, serve on Board, local Board of Education, or state Board of Education. So, from my standpoint, thank you so much. I've been at my job for 19 years, if you can relate that, as School Safety Director in our state, and one of the things that occurred when our marshal shooting occurred back in 2018 is after we made a big. is after we had this push, that let's do something about school safety. And I've been keeping that drum for about 15 years prior to that. Let's do something that we're going to sink our teeth into. And so thank goodness, we got the gentleman's pass, the very, as Rob was saying, a very comprehensive piece of legislation that looked at what I like to refer to as the hardware and the hardware, the physical plant stuff and then the mental health stuff like this. Obviously, my shop deals more with the physical plant stuff. And they came to me early on and they said, John, I want you to add a, you know, add a compliance portion to your center. It's taken me 19 years to make school districts feel that I'm out the hammer looking for the nail coming in there. And so it's easier for me to go in and do training and make suggestions to them after we assess a school not assessing our best tool, but our tool that we have. And so it's more of a human-to-human assessment tool that we use. So I pushed back with the legislature, said I don't want this, give it to somebody else. So I went over to the Department of Criminal Justice Training. And I said, now, as an educator, the last thing we need to do is have a hammer looking for nail coming into our schools, drive this, say like a health department, you have a 75 rating here and people are going to say, take my kids out of here, all of 90 or higher type of thing. And so the assessment tool that we agreed upon talks about them, looks at what Senate Bill 1 is asking for. And then I asked for a component to be in there. I want to know what's going on in the other schools as well. Not so much in compliance with the law, but I want to know what other tricks and trade they have going on in their schools. We have some that are doing like, for example, they have an escort service when kids need to go to the bathroom in the high schools because they smoke during class time. They don't smoke during, you know, break times, they smoke during class time. And so we have a simple little thing down at Green County High School where the teachers take the kids down to the bathroom, check it out, come back in. That's a little tool that we have to try to stop smoking. We get into other issues too where when you look at the Portland shootings that occurred, when the fire alarm went off, now we're asking school districts to get the local fire marshal and determine, do we need to get up like we normally do, you know, when the fire alarm goes off, the robots and leave out there? Or do we need to wait 30 seconds to a minute and a half before we're able to be sure if there is a fire there? So practices that were done years ago change on a regular basis. Another example, Columbine, who I'm a very dear friend with Frank DeAngelis, who was the principal of Columbine. The shooter protocol back that time is that if you had a shooter in the school, you waited for the SWAT team to come. That takes them 45 minutes to get there. Shooting takes like 3 to 8 minutes. Now, police officers come straight on in for the noise and take out the shooter. They don't wait for things like that. So this is a dynamic that continually changes on a regular basis. So two, you know, two things I want to say here. One, on this assessment tool, I would like to see if the schools are in compliance with the lockdowns, with the locking the doors and all the security things we're asking them to do. But two, I want to find out what they're doing in their schools over beyond that so we can share that. And so that's very important for me as a director of school safety to push out good ideas. We do not use the term best practices anymore because what was the best practice? Alice, when you were teaching, we slipped green cards and red cards under the tables or under the doors and stuff like that. They don't do that anymore. You know? I'll start to look for that one, very good noise. And so we're changing, you know, radically what we're doing and we call these things current practices that are being used as opposed to best practice. So when Ben's group goes out, they're going to look for what's going on with Senate Bill 1 regulations like that. Two, they're going to look for best or current practices that we can share. So without further ado, let me keep it over to my buddy here. Let him kind of tell you what he's going to do.
Thank you so much for having us today. Again, my name is Ben Wilcox, State School Security Marshal. I'll tell you this much and how new this office is, is I was appointed in this position in July. I started working with the Kentucky Center for School Safety in May. So when I gave my presentations across the state, we were across the state, I had introduced myself as the supervisor of the Instructional Design Section, hoping to be signed in as your new State School Security Marshal. So saying that it's moved pretty fast and really has. I actually was the office of the State School Security Marshal up until December 2nd when we started hiring our compliance officers. We've had compliance officers in the schools, having contact with the schools since December and then we started our assessments the second week of January. The assessment tool was created by Commissioner Payne, who was commissioner in the Department of Criminal Justice at the time. We took it to John and we had put this assessment tool out to the schools as soon as we could. Our idea was is to get it in the hands of the schools so they can look at it and see where they were at on their own. The law states that I have to do a report to KDE, to Kentucky Center for School Safety and the Legislative Research Committee by September of 2021. We did not want to roll into our schools starting in 2020, 2021 school year and run through this assessment tool or any assessment tool and come back and say, here's where you're deficient and now it's going on to a report. No, what we did was have the schools look at the assessment tool first. Our compliance officers are going to complete every school in the state of Kentucky, hopefully before the end of this school year. And that assessment is on us. It is not going in to report. It is on us that way we can make a relationship with the school as a compliance officer, showing them what they need to do and getting them help to get to that point. The next time we come, it's a non-scheduled visit. We'll show up at the front door and we'll actually go through the assessment tool. But by that time, and I'm not really good at math, that's why I became a cop, was we've already had two strikes at this thing. We already had two swings at it. So the schools know what we're looking for. They know the compliance officers as a resource as they come in. And that third time that we walk in the door, they really know what's going on in the schools. Now, as for the assessment tool, we knew we were going to have to make changes to it. You don't find anything out until you put per se boots on the ground and start asking questions and see how people understand things, how the schools work. And we're looking at changes and we're looking at input for changes in the assessment tool. And I take to tell you right now, even without input, as soon as Senate Bill 8 is passed, there will have to be changes to that assessment tool. In speaking to our IT folks that developed this tool, and I take him out to lunch as much as possible because he's a genius, because this assessment tool was nothing up until about two months ago and it's completely automated now and we actually do our assessments on iPad, which is amazing, that we can start making changes as necessary, but we need to wait to, in between school years, to make those changes. Because as you know, as you start to collect data, if you start changing questions on those data, your data gets skewed. Now, the first assessment again is on us and we're going to use those, those data basically to help schools to get to where they need to be. And then that next assessment is going to be, again, into a report that goes to those three entities. And again, we're also looking for the fact that not only is it going to be a full report to KDE to look at the actual compliance, it'll be a summarized report to Kentucky Department of, or Kentucky Center for School Safety. And the third is going to be our current trends or current practices that we can put out to the whole state to say, these are the good things that are going on at schools. And Boyd County wants to try something and Ashland or should I say, Paduba is doing a real good job at it. They can look at that report to contact each other and we can all work together to be safer on our campuses. And we're already finding out great things that are going on with the schools. We're 20% in right now. Our folks are working overtime and within three weeks, we've already covered 20% of the schools in the state of Kentucky. And that's with 15 full-time compliance officers and 20 part-time compliance officers. So that's where we're sitting on the actual assessment tool. And we are looking for input and we can make changes as those input become necessary.
And something else that I'm very proud of is that we're the only state in the country that has a unit that's doing this for the schools, for the compliance. A lot of schools around the state, student not in state, but around the country are doing self-assessments. And that's a little bit different pony, so to speak, than what you'd have in a kind of ice cream to do those things. And so like Ben says, we're going to change with the times and we're going to continue on refining this thing year after year to make it better, better, and better, and better. So we're excited about this. This has given me a strong bully pull to push a lot of things down the road that we had a lot of shoulds in the laws before now the shalls. And when you have a shall, you have the door and not going to go and say, this needs to go in that direction. Not in a compliance heavy duty way, but come on guys, let's move in this direction. And it works very, very well.
And I'll address some of the questions. I'm sorry.
Well, one thing that I've noticed as a political science major, having served in the legislature and stuff like that, is that I've seen and a lot of, a lot of political writers have seen that this security matter in the schools is the number one driver of women voters in America right now. Because you send your kids to school and that not everything in the world is being done to provide security as best it can be. They'll vote against anybody that doesn't support it, okay? And that's what's been happening. It's been happening in the last two or three elections and it's going to be even bigger. It's the number one issue for women voters and it's huge. And so that's why the powers that be in this state need to make sure that you guys are successful and that you do use the good ideas and share those with, with school systems because you, the constituents out there, they want this done back.
Yes, sir. And Paul added that, I send three ladies to school every day. 12-year-old, 12-year-old, and 9-year-old. And that's, that's our biggest push for sure. So yes, sir, I agree with you.
Is this one of those unfunded mandates that the state's really good at handing out, but they don't give any funding?
We, we talked about in our earlier budget presentation, the 18.2 million that was appropriated in the governor's recommended budget for the facility upgrades. The other things in Senate Bill 1 are, I would say, are more aspirational in nature from a funding perspective.
That's correct.
Certainly aspirational because it's going to make things better in our school system, mental health providers, counselors, and all that. But it is worded such that as funding becomes available or as funding is available. Ben also talked about Senate Bill 8, which is, I will call kind of the clean up. I use that very loosely because it does have some major provisions in it to, because now Senate Bill 1 from 2019 has been out for a little bit and people have learned things from it. And as we have talked to local school districts, so there was some concerns around some of that and opportunities to improve. And so I think Senate Bill 8, and it does have an emergency provision on it, I believe, which will enable that to come into play even quicker. So that's happening. So I was describing it to John yesterday about we're driving the, we're trying to change the tire on the car while we're driving 90 miles down the highway. So this is just the first read of the proposed regulation. I would encourage you to go out and look at the assessment tool and the questions that are being asked and then also talk to local school districts about their impressions of that tool and how it's working. I think there is a great receptiveness to making changes for improvement, clarification as needed. And then it will come back in front of the board again for a second reading. So this is just to kind of whet your appetite a little bit, I guess.
And I would recommend that they look at the current iteration that we have. You sent that to the people on Hillside, so you may have one generation older than what's out there right now. We just sent something out on Monday, didn't we?
That's correct.
And so, and those were what the recommendations that the LSAC put in there. And we've already pushed that out to the compliance officers that are going to go. And we sent out the superintendents into what we call SSCs. Every school district has a school safety coordinator there as well, which is along with every son's district.
So I understand there is no funding currently for this branch?
No. No, we have funded.
They have funding.
I have a budget of 13 million. I operate on 10% of that, the other 90% I send out to the school districts. Formula, every district gets $20,000 regardless of size and then it's $13 for the 40 and cents, kid times your average state attendance. So you see how that works.
Because John Drew has been in existence for some time. Senate Bill 1, why is new legislation? They have been working with local school districts on safety for a long time.
We were created, the marshal's office was created with the bill and it was created under the purview of the Department of Criminal Justice Training. So our budget comes directly from the Department of Criminal Justice Training. That's why we've been able to go out and do what we're doing. That's because our funding is coming from the department.
And that's not coming out of the education pocket, so that's a good idea.
So you developed the assessment tool and then he's going to implement it or?
Well, it's been a collaboration. Like he was saying, the commissioner of the Department of Criminal Justice Training took the requirements out of Senate Bill 1 that were required there. We added some things in there that, from my shop or whatever. And I've also put into that, that I'd like to see what's going on in other districts as well. So it's a, what are you doing as far as compliance is compared with the law? And some things that you're doing that's over beyond that so we can find out what's going on. So he said we could share that information.
Basically, we developed it, we run it, KCSS approves the tool.
And I have a board of directors that are appointed by the government and they have to pass this. We have four law enforcement, four health, mental health. We have four educator groups and we have online security in there, parent, school nurse, things like this. And we have a good cross-section. Very, you know, it's a very, very, very good board to work with. I haven't had, I haven't had a bad board in all my 19 years from all the different governors who have had their voices in business. So we have a good one here too.
Any questions? Did you approve this? It's just a first reading.
No, it's just first reading.
Just graduate them and work with them.
And we'll come back again.
And they'll come back again for second reading.
I'm seeing Billy forfeiting up on this.
Please, we can go way back.
Yes, sir. Very many ways. Appreciate it, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you again. Good to know Rob better.
I think that concludes our agenda, so we'll get our motion together.
I'll make a motion.
Say you're going to leave. Sharon did make, I think she had to figure her hand out.
Thank you. Yeah. I bet she had to leave early.
Yeah, she had to leave early so we could give her a particular mention. So did you get the rolls? I need to fill this out.
Check it, but I'm not losing you. Yeah, if you leave that in your folder, sure.
Oh, okay. I'm going to take this in.
I definitely forgot to tell you guys, please break your laptops.
That's what I just thought about it. All right, well, thank you all for your.
Thank you very much. And we'll go back into the full board.